Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the city of Bettendorf. This is our committee of the whole meeting. Today is Monday, April 18th, 2022. It's 5:00 PM. Thank you all for being here. We have an important presentation this evening. This is a very important topic for our community. And the level of service that we've come to expect out of Medic EMS has been fantastic. And for our discussion today, it's my pleasure to introduce to you to Linda Frederickson. She is the executive director of Medic EMS. And she will be joined today by David Farmer, the finance director at Scott County. And you'll understand why as this model is shown to you, as well as Decker Plain, our city administrator, who's been on the medic board for quite some time. So Linda, you have the floor. Welcome. We're glad that you're here. Come on up. Hopefully, we've got your presentation. There it is. You've got a paper copy in front of you in full color. And you know how to hit the button to move over to the presentation screen. And we'll certainly have a discussion should one be needed at the conclusion. You'll have an opportunity to ask a ton of questions as well.
Your honor, I'd like to just start out by welcoming Linda. We've been working on this model for about strongly three to four years. And as the council knows, we put this in the council priorities to try to finalize this 2080 agreement. And it's been a labor of love and institutions might be there. And working with our colleagues in Davenport and Scott County. And David and Jason and Mallory Merritt have been the finance folks at the table to look at all the modeling. And David really has been from the finance side, kind of the brains of the outfit. And so anyways, Linda is going to take us through a little bit of history and then we'll talk about where we think we are.
Great. Thank you very much for taking the time to talk with us tonight. Appreciate you allowing us to come down with your busy schedules. So we thought we'd go ahead and just give you a quick overview of the company. We'll be 40 years old in May and talk a little bit about some different financing and operational model options and some next steps. First of all, many of you who have been from the community for a number of years might remember M&amp;M Ambulance.
Oh, my goodness.
We remember them, yes.
Some who may have been in service who used them, Greg? Were they your favorite?
Brought back memories.
It was awful.
Brought back memories.
So I believe that M&amp;M stood for Marvin and Martha, who were the owners. There were some other acronyms that were associated with M&amp;M. But we were formed in 1982 by a partnership between Scott County, St. Luke's, and Mercy Hospitals, who are the precursors to Genesis Health System in 1982. At the urging of Dr. John Collins, who was a great family practitioner and identified a need to improve the EMS system in Scott County, we started out with four ambulances and 32 employees. And I was not driving that ambulance. It's on the front there. We started out with an eight-member board of directors, with each of the hospital entities having four board members. Davenport Osteopathic, who became Davenport Medical Center, and then Unity Point Trinity, joined in 1986 with two board members. And then a very important thing happened in 1996 when five public members came on to the board of directors, bringing the board level to 15. And the five public members are named below the Scott County Administrator or the Chair of the Scott County Board of Supervisors. And that has been the administrator, and that's Mr. Mahash Sharma, the mayor or city administrator of the city of Bettendorf. And it's Decker, the mayor of Davenport, the city administrator of Davenport, and then an elected official or member of an ambulance or fire service policy board representative in a small town in Scott County. And currently, that is Mayor Dennis Gerard. And then Dr. Vermeer is ex officio. He's been with the company since we started, and I believe he's also the medical director for the Bettendorf Fire Department. Our executive committee just simply have them listed up there towards the left. They are lucky enough to get to meet monthly at Medic, while the remaining directors, nine of 15, will meet every other month. But that's our board of directors. So if we look at our current model of operation, that's a map of Scott County, you can see that we have the Scott County Board of Health Agreement up in the upper left-hand corner. And we are the exclusive Scott County service provider for geographical areas A and E, which would be the large blue area. There are three other ambulance services that are also serving Scott County up in the northwest corner. That would be Wheatland Ambulance, operating at a basic life support level, and Bennett and Durant Ambulance, which also operate at advanced life support levels. It's interesting that Medic is the only ambulance provider for Scott County that actually resides within Scott County. Wheatland is in Clinton County, while both Bennett and Durant are in Cedar County. We did start a non-emergency transfer operation in Clinton since 2000. And the benefits of the current model is that it's a true county ambulance system, 100% advanced life support for 406 of the county's 456 square miles. That places patient care squarely at the center. We have a lack of silos. We have a single solution model that we can load balance. For example, if we have a significant accident, for example, on the riverfront in a rural community, we can get four ambulances there very quickly. If we have a rolling shooting, maybe somewhere in the metro area, we can get four ambulances there very quickly, no matter what the time of day. We also do scheduled transfers, and that's very, very helpful because that helps us to increase capacity. For example, if we have enough staffing to get patients to the University of Iowa, if we have a critical burn patient that maybe has a 50% burn, we can dispatch an ambulance there and get that patient to definitive care very quickly. If we have a mom who is 28 weeks gestation with twins and she needs to get to a Level One nursery, we can do that as well. So we've been thinking about sustainability for quite a while. And in fact, on July 30th of 2015, we were approached by the Scott County Board of Health. The director at that time was Mr. Ed Rivers. And he came with Denise Koiner, who was the chair of the Board of Health, and Dr. Kathy Hansen, who is the current chair of the Board of Health, to discuss the 2014 Tri-Data Survey that was commissioned by Scott County to look at the emergency medical services delivery in Scott County. And at that time, Mr. Rivers introduced a concept of transitioning Medic EMS, that's a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, to a 2080 operation. And he was looking at potential revenue source being the Iowa offset program. In 2014, that generated $44 million recovered for businesses in the state of Iowa, in addition to a potential expense reduction with sales tax and fuel tax. And our ambulances travel between 600,000 and 700,000 miles every year. And also some improved employee benefits by reducing turnover with I-Pers. The overarching goal of that meeting back on July 30th, 2015, was to assure a funding model that supports sustainable delivery of emergency medical services and works for our entire community as a whole. When we look at subsidization for Scott County, you can see that since 2012, we have began to experience some losses. Prior to 2012, Medic operated with the hospitals in a Part A under arrangement billing system, and we moved to Part B in 2012, which made payer mix for us very, very important. When we first started with Part B billing, we worked pretty hard to get good at it. And I think we're very good at it now. But we did have a couple of years of loss in 2012 and 13 that we did not request subsidy that are listed in that center column. We had an additional two years of loss that we requested partial subsidy. And then we've had a few years that we didn't have a loss, but we started to see a trend of increasing loss.
Can you tell us what the Part A and Part B difference is and why the payer mix is important? For instance, the type of people that you might transport and how you get compensated, unless that's a different slide?
It's not a different slide. Payer mix is very important, but there's a little bit different funding for Part A versus Part E ambulance, Part B. Ambulances are reimbursed a little bit differently under hospitals. They can spread the costs a little bit differently. Part A systems can get additional revenue under DRGs or diagnosis-related groups, and that is not available under Part B.
And under Part B, your payer mix, as you talked about, becomes important, how and why? You have some Medicare, you have some non-pay, you have cash pay, you have insurance.
Yes. So that becomes really important when our payers are what we would call a fixed payer that would be unaffected by rate increases. And I will show you a slide on that.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. So.
But I think, go back to that slide for a second, Linda. In my 25 years on the board, I don't think we had one year of loss prior to that 2012. And that was when we went to Leclerc and took over the Leclerc operation. But I don't think there was a loss other than that until that timeframe, if I recall, from the time I was on in 96.
Right. I think Eldridge was 99, Leclerc was 11, and Bluegrass was 2014. So some increasing presence.
So Bluegrass would have been a change as well?
Yes. That was another change.
All right.
2020 was, your gain in 2020 was, um?
Yes, that was related to the COVID Payroll Protection Act that's been fully forgiven.
Okay.
So that looked like a massive gain, but it really wasn't.
No, we understand.
Yeah. So after we had the visit back in 2015, we went ahead and engaged WashCo and Associates. They had visited Medic before in 2010. And interestingly, they were with us to study Medic in March. And during that time, House filed 2285, or Ground Emergency Medical Transportation, also known as GEMT, was passed by the Iowa House and then by the Senate. And while WashCo and Associates were visiting, they found that to be very interesting as a potential state-approved funding mechanism. Once that's passed, then we have to write a state plan amendment that goes to the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services. The initial attempt at the state plan amendment was written so all Iowa Medicaid providers, be they governmental or non-governmental, be included. And that was unfortunately not accepted. So it was rewritten, so just governmental providers were approved. I know that I was heavily involved as the past president of the Iowa EMS Association at that time. And I know that my concern is 70% of the EMS providers or ambulance transport providers are not-for-profit. They're volunteer agencies. So I wanted to make sure that they had the capacity to get in on the funding mechanism. But unfortunately, that is not available as a not-for-profit. As you can see there, a couple of key findings there. The recommendations by WashCo and Associates were to go ahead and look at a 2080 or a joint powers authority entity within Scott County, based on the results that we could get that additional state revenue to offset the expenses. A conceptual framework diagram was developed in the lower right-hand corner. And another key finding was that while Medic is very, very efficient with a cost per call of around $400, that the cost per transport was starting to exceed the revenue per transport back in 2016. So we began in earnest to start to develop the 2080 concept with a recommendation to utilize NYMAST and Associates with approval by the Medic Board of Directors. We developed talking points. I believe you probably have copies of those in front of you, front and back, that would basically have, you know, the pros of a governmental model. And we began to go out and deliver education for municipalities. I came before your council back in 2019, as well as some local healthcare systems. The agreement is in the upper right-hand corner. The talking points are right there as well. So what has happened since 2019? Well, a couple of things. We started to see some really significant payer mix shifts. Part of that had to do with the Affordable Care Act. Part of that had to do with the fact that it became much easier for individuals to get Medicaid. And we saw that in our state. Our state went to a managed care Medicaid system. And as you can see, if we look at Medicare in FY 11, Medicare for Medic has always hovered right around 50%. But Medicaid has continued to increase. And you can see that we were about 17% in fiscal year 11, and that's grown to about 30%. Unfortunately, as Medicaid has went up, commercial insurances went down. Commercial insurance is typically responsive to rate changes and rate increases.
Which means they'll increase.
Yes.
And pay you the increase.
Correct. Yeah. There are certain commercial insurers that are a bit more fixed, like Blue Cross and Blue Shield tends to have more of a rate schedule. But most commercial insurance, if you bill them for $100, they pay you $100. But we saw a lot of that shifting with the Affordable Care Act. So now we see that commercial insurance is down around 16%, which 4% doesn't seem like a lot, but it is a lot. So technically.
Linda, talk about what our costs are versus Medicare reimbursement, just numbers, because I think that helps.
So just a few things. Medicare is supposed to be essentially an estimation of ambulance costs. But unfortunately, both Medicare and Medicaid have fallen well behind the cost of ambulance transportation. When we look at Medicare, the good thing that they're going to start doing effective July 1st is they are going to start requiring ambulances to start reporting costs so they can get their arms around truly what it costs to deliver ambulance service. Medicaid, unfortunately, in the state of Iowa, we are among the last five in the nation for Medicaid reimbursement. Medicaid reimbursement is governed by the states, and Iowa always ranks in the last five in the country.
In terms of how long it takes to get the money or the value of what you actually receive?
In the reimbursement.
Okay.
Yeah. Sometimes by, you know, it's probably 50% less than some other states. So typically, Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement, when we add the 50% of Medicare and the 30% of Medicaid, now we're at 80% of fixed payers. And the reimbursement value that we get from them has fallen below the cost of ambulance transport.
Thus, the state legislatures attempt to reimburse the government entities, I understand you tried to get everybody that difference or some portion of difference through a formula that you may get to?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So we've also seen some personnel challenges. Much like many other businesses, we know that we typically compete with fire departments for personnel who desire to be firefighters. We can't offer that, unfortunately. But we certainly support the many fine Bettendorf firefighters, many who started their EMS career at Medic. And also, we know that, you know, the benefits with defined benefit retirement plans are better than our defined contribution. In 2019, though, we began to see a loss of employees to hospital emergency departments for staffing in emergency departments, clinics, cath labs, to cover for the nursing shortage. They can't hire nurses, so now they're looking at expanding the scope of paramedics and EMTs so they can utilize them in hospitals. Hospitals as well are offering some things that we typically, in public safety, have not offered, such as shift differentials, weekend differentials, call-in bonuses, significant hiring incentives, the impending wage increase in neighboring states such as Illinois, with the minimum wage going up to $15 an hour progressively. And we're seeing some general workforce shortages in every single occupation. So that created some further sustainability concerns. And we held a special session with the, for the Medic EMS Board of Directors. Oops, I'm going the wrong way here. Let's go backwards here. The other thing was the COVID-19 pandemic, supply chain problems, cost increases, personnel fatigue, illness, burnout. I think you can probably talk with your fire department, and we can talk about N95 masks and how much fun they are to wear and gowns and things like that. But a significant workload increase, and we're really glad to see that starting to wind down a little bit. So we want to talk a little bit, and I have David up here with me to talk about some different, both service delivery and financing models. And I'll let David talk a little bit about Chapter 422D that was just recently introduced into Iowa legislation.
This one's live, too. So the next four slides describe four different financing models that we're going to just touch upon about in order to continue service. The first one that we reference to here is called 422D. This was, this is a part of legislation that impacts counties. So if the county were to take on a service as an essential service for a county-wide service, and it would probably run like a department of the county, okay? 422D is an option to really provide for an additional tax levy that applies countywide, not in one particular city or other. It would be a separate tax levy, and that tax levy could go up to 75 cents per $1,000 evaluation, which in Scott County's case would generate about $7.5 million. We do not need $7.5 million. The financing gap that we are looking at ranges anywhere, as you've seen on that previous screen, $200,000, but likely more up to $1 million or $1.5 million, depending on how their, the economics of Medic continue to change with those additional staffing costs. It is a referendum that needs to be approved. So you need a 60% approval from all your voters that vote in that election in order to enact this. And once it's enacted, it's good for 10 years. So it's very similar to the schools and their revenue purpose statements for their low-cost save bonds and so forth. But it's a good for 10 years that the voters have approved a funding mechanism for this essential purpose of the county. Once it's approved, there's an advisory council that helps direct where the money goes. And it can be repealed as well by the voters if they so choose. But this is a new funding mechanism. You see there that only two out of the 99 counties so far have taken this option. This would be a public awareness campaign to make sure that they're aware of what the funding is going towards. Want to go to the next one?
Which counties have done it?
It was Wright County and, I'm drawing a blank on the second one. They were smaller metropolitan counties, no one as large as Scott County. Yeah. The next option is reorganizing to a 28E, which again, let's remember, I like to define what a 28E is. A 28E is just a joint agreement between other governmental partners. And so you could have an agreement with a not-for-profit, but in the case that we find here, this ground emergency transport is that it's very important to the state that you have one applying entity. It's not a conglomerate of governments working together, such as like a Scott Emergency Communication Center or the Waste Commission. Those are both 28E agreement governments. What we, our feedback from the state is that they would like to see one government apply for that funding as a lead agency and be that, that applying entity at that point. When we say reorganization to 28E, it would still be like a, potentially a Scott County leading, a leading agency, but having other partners work with us in these years of transition to help make sure that there's that funding available for the new cost. We like to say that revenue drives a budget. And so what we are talking here is about revenue options to help, to help provide for the budget that's being developed here.
Just a quick question there. Understanding that Scott County would have to be, or a political entity, under this model, we're suggesting Scott County, since it's the countywide, be the lead dog in the sled and be the entity that makes application for GEMT funds. There still could be an organized effort or group, kind of like SAC, that maybe helps run and make the day-to-day operational decisions as a quote "board" that would include the rest of us.
Correct.
And that would be enticing.
That would be enticing. To have that feedback from partners is very important.
Awesome. Thank you.
And again, I point out that GEMT revenue is very enticing. And we didn't, I don't think we have a slide about the GEMT revenue, but this ground emergency transport revenue is a way to access federal funding that basically turns a 40% contribution into a 60% contribution, so you net additional 20% contribution. That's a very, but they are very concerned, rightfully so, that's public tax dollars there that are, is that 40% contribution. So that's a very, it can open up other funding opportunities, and that 422D financing in the future can be that support for this ground emergency transport or contributions from the county, the city of Davenport, city of Bettendorf, city of Eldridge, all the municipalities in Scott County.
So conceivably, we're paying X for medic services. If that X stayed the same or even had to increase for a period of time to avoid the crisis that we may see ourselves in, we could do that. Or we could do that and go to option one in the future and do a referendum. And the money that we raise through the referendum would be, by the voters voting on that portion of the tax, could be used as the match money to get the additional 20%.
If it runs, our understanding is if it runs through one entity.
Right. Excellent. Thank you.
That, yeah.
Jason's giving us a nod. Okay. I know you all three are working together. You went to the same seminar or meeting or whatever. Okay.
It's very key to the, again, as a point, one organization, not a 28E as the applicant, but one government, city or county.
Right. We could all iron that out in an agreement between us that you are taking that lead. And you would be that agency, and you would, we'd follow. Okay.
Yep.
I'm comfortable.
Option three for the financing arrangement, and we're going to tag-team this one, is that Medic EMS remains a 501(c)(3). The do-nothing option is that you stay as-is, you rely on this. Scott County has in its budget right now to that up to $200,000 match. But again, we don't know where that can be or go in the future.
That's how it's been since '92?
Actually, it's been that way probably for about the last 15 years. But prior, there was a period of time where the hospitals shared in the loss. But under the federal law, there was a change in the federal law that there was, that would be enticement. And so the hospitals were kicked out of the ability to pay for loss. And that's when the county assumed the $200,000.
Right. Up to $200,000.
Right. Yep.
Said they, they were kicked out of the ability to help us with the loss.
That's right. There was a federal, a change in the federal law that would be conceived as a conflict of interest and enticement.
And they were crying all the way home.
Well, we didn't, and frankly, we didn't have very many losses at that point. So it was, it was a mixed bag. But again, the world changed for us when that happened.
Sure.
And, and, and the economies of the world changed, so.
I think on this slide, the graph continues to tell the story here, that the cost per trip continues to exceed the ambulance revenue per trip. And as we say here, revenue drives a budget. If, as 501(c)(3) is developed right now, it's not driving, it's not able to provide for the services.
And those years like last, where there are losses more significantly, more than $200,000, looking into the future with the inflationary measures, the price of gas, those kinds of things that are very important to this particular organization, what happens if we don't have the, if we can't cover the shortfall with the 200?
Correct.
Well, we've taken it from fund balance, but we've driven our fund balance now significantly down, both because of rising costs and, and trying to compete with wages.
Keep our people.
So we've, we've not been able to, there were years where we absorbed a minor loss and didn't even invoke the county because we had the fund balance to do so. But again, when, when the hospital world changed and when the county came up with the $200,000 as the maximum, you can see what's happened to us over the last seven or eight years.
Okay.
Linda, if we do nothing, how long before we're in crisis mode?
Well, I mean, I think that we're seeing the losses continue to, you know, progress. I think, you know, certainly, labor costs are going up. We're seeing vehicle costs going up. Gosh, I remember when, I'll be the director 18 years this year, and I can remember probably the cost of an ambulance has at least doubled since I became the director. You know, supplies are going up. So I mean, I would say, it's hard to say, three to five years, maybe?
And at that point, without a plan, we have no service?
Well, we can talk about that.
Okay.
And that would be, you know, option four, if, you know, Medic dissolves, if we just cannot sustain and can't, you know, retain the personnel or pay the personnel to provide service. Basically, the question of providing service would return back to the municipality and the county health board. We have Chapter 28 that governs ambulance service in Scott County. And other municipalities we know are currently looking at some models. You could, you know, open up in Scott County, maybe an RFP for maybe a for-profit or another existing not-for-profit to come in and provide service. There are several other private services that are in the area. There are several other private services that are in the area. You know, you could also look at, you know, certainly fire department models as well. But what do we lose if medic dissolves? Just a couple of things. So we have been, since I've worked there for 27 years, the largest transporting service in Iowa that has served Scott County for the last 40 years, and we are 100% dedicated to ambulance transportation. We don't have to worry about being good at anything else but to go out and try to do a great job on the ambulance every day. We're licensed to serve about 80% of Scott County's geography, but we take care of about 95% plus of the calls for service. As a single call, single-source ambulance service, we have a complete lack of silos. If I look across the river, and we have got a lot of great providers across the river, but there's a lot of mutual aid activity going on over there. One one service runs out of ambulance, so they call the dispatch center and say, can you mutual aid, can you mutual aid? The beauty of a larger transport provider that has both 911 responsibilities as well as scheduled transfer responsibilities is that we can increase capacity. So if we get that big accident out at mile marker 301 that we're responding to, and we need to have multiple ambulances respond, and we have scheduled transfers going on, we can put those transfers on hold for 30 minutes, respond to those accidents, and then come back and take care of those transfers. So we can leverage that. We've been accredited since 1996. We were actually the, I think, the first in Iowa and Illinois to receive an ambulance accreditation, and the 50th in the country. Our dispatch entity has been accredited since 2011, 150th in the world. We, along with our fantastic first responders, many of who are sitting in this room, helped get the 2021 Mission Lifeline, which basically speeds the care of the cardiac patient who's having a heart attack into cath labs, so we can go ahead and open vessels up and so patients retain, you know, good heart function. We have 167 employees. We've been critical care since 2006, when we determined that hospital resources to provide respiratory therapists to take patients for transfers on ventilators were scarce. We have 20 advanced life support ambulances, and within the next month or so, every single ambulance will have a Vaxin ventilator. These were purchased by the state of Iowa as a strategic stockpile for COVID-19 patients that they thought would all be on ventilators, and many of them were, but they didn't use them, so they essentially got those out to transporting ambulance services, and we have those available. And the scope of practice for Iowa paramedics has increased, so we'll be able to take cardiac arrest patients, put them on ventilators, and hopefully improve outcomes of cardiac arrest, which are already pretty good in Scott County. If we look at this single access point, MEDCOM, which is the Medic EMS Ambulance Dispatch Division, has been located at the SEC since 2011, and in fact, it was the first entity inside of SEC. We do that at about a $1.2 million administrative cost center. If we don't provide the ambulance dispatching, because we cease to exist, who will provide that? Who will absorb that 1.2 million, which is actually going to be a little bit more than that because we also do some outsourced dispatching that we recover some revenue from? So that will actually go to about 1.4 million. As you can see there, that is an administrative allocation, and you can see what those costs are. We're patient-focused. We've been doing 12 lead EKGs out in the field since 1998. That's a lot of the Mission Lifeline stuff. In 2004, we started giving continuous positive airway pressure to patients in congestive heart failure, and we found that we had fewer intensive care unit stays and crash inhibitions on arrival to the hospital, and we talked about the ventilators. And those were made actually by General Motors Corporation. They're in the lower right-hand corner. We're also calling stroke alerts, so if we have a patient who's calling, our dispatchers are able to ask a couple of questions of the caller. They find out if their speech is slurred, if they can't raise their eyes, if their face is asymmetrical, and we call stroke alerts, meaning that patients stay right on our ambulance stretcher, they go immediately into the CAT scanner, and they get a CAT scan quickly to see if they are eligible for a clot buster, which is available an 85% of the time, and we have patients that start out having a stroke but have no deficits because we can speed that. And critical care transport, that depth of coverage by providing both the non-emergency and emergency transports for hospital. Every manager at medic is a a critical care paramedic, so we supplement that staffing. So in summary, we have deeply appreciated the community's confidence and Scott County's financial support, which has allowed us to provide accredited, state-of-the-art ambulance services along in concert with some completely amazing first responders that we have, certainly in Bettendorf and Davenport and out in our rural communities. They they truly make the difference in your city. We have a sincere commitment commitment to continue to deliver the finest ambulance service, and revenue drives the budget, so we unfortunately, as a not-for-profit, are struggling with the fact that the cost of service is now exceeding the revenue per transport. There is revenue that is literally not available to us as a 501(c)(3), such as the Iowa Offset Program, some of the expense relief through sales taxes and, you know, federal and state fuel excise taxes, and also ground emergency medical transport. So we're hoping that we can work together collectively with our communities to continue to provide ambulance transport in Scott County. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer. Yes, sir?
Just a quick question. There is some talk out on the street, I'm sure you've heard it as well as we have. Is everybody on board, or are there breakaways possibly from the 208E agreement?
Well, I think what you're, what Linda talked about is that in the modeling, certainly the fire department model is is being discussed as a potential model. In other jurisdictions, we haven't talked about that at this point, but it is being discussed, and our concern with that is if every fire department is going to get its own ambulance, that's going to be pretty duplicative, and it may not be the most efficient way to handle. And there's lots of issues that we've got to talk about in terms of transporting folks from a 911 call to the hospital, and then what happens to them once they get to the hospital? And then somebody says, we, these guys got to go to Iowa City, or it's got to go to Rockford, or got to go to Mayo. Who transports them at that point? So there there are some really complicating discussions occurring. We have been talking about the 208E for a couple of years and thought that we were close to, I guess, coming to some conclusion, the GEMT kind of came into play during that discussion and complicated it. And then how you got access to those funds has been complicated even more than what we originally perceived. So I think there's lots of discussion occurring about what what is the model or what are the models available to us? And then do we do we all stay together like we've been doing in so many of our other models, like the Solid Waste Commission and the SEC, the Compost Facility, all those things? So that's the reason that we're having this discussion with you. Scott County's had it last week, Davenport's going to have this in a couple of weeks. We're now to a place where a decision is likely going to have to start to take place to the mayor's earlier question. It's not imminent, but in three to five years, based on where we're going today.
It could be worse based upon the inflation that we really haven't put into that model.
Right. So this is not, the sky is falling at the moment, but we're starting to feel raindrops, would be the way that I would describe it.
Yes, Scott Webster?
I only have two concerns. I think I brought these up, and I'll just reiterate them. The board makeup of the 208E doesn't look like it has any police or fire people on it, albeit we have Decker, who was in the police department back when he got on his horse and broke up the saloon fight. So we got some experience there, but why why have they not put, I mean, police and fire were close with medic, and when they have concerns, wouldn't it be better that they would be on that board to help better facilitate? Overall, when we're talking about community-wise, I think that's a good thing, and bringing everybody together, would that not be good to have, at least, maybe they're not a voting member, but at least so they could be there to make sure that they're working together better?
Well, we've had technical committees both through the SEC, which is probably where the the largest technical committee is. We had a technical advisory committee that we started 27 years ago for that purpose of handling things at the operational level in a technical sense. And that has morphed into the LEPC, which is the Local Emergency Planning Council. And then at the SEC, there's also a TAC committee that Steve and, I don't know if Keith has been to those, but both of those have been involved in those, and we have another one that's morphed into the radio committee. So there are technical committees here. This has been more of the administrative oversight board for medic, where we handle what I call the operational impacts at at the technical levels.
Yeah, just those impacts obviously affect our fire departments sometimes. We have to increase those fire departments because of the way that those things work. So that was one of my concerns. The other concern was is, I think Johnson County is a countywide ambulance, if I'm correct.
Yes.
And they're losing a large amount of money. So that was my ultimate concern in going into it, was trying to figure out how to figure out where they've gone wrong. I mean, I looked at their budget again today, I think they, I think they're budgeting for a negative 1.6 million this year in loss for medic. I don't know if they have the taxing authority yet or not. They're probably not one of the two counties, so they're probably not.
They haven't voted on it yet to go into that first option, but the GEMT should be available.
They should call, they do call, they've been, they've been working through the GEMT model
Okay.
in order to account for costs, report qualified service calls, and then they're reimbursed on the on that threshold at that point.
And and one of the reasons that we've decided that we need to move fairly quickly here is if we don't make a decision in the 208E world by July 1st, the the period of, I'm not sure how to describe it, David, but the period of acceptance for GEMT, the clock starts July 1st. So if you're not won by July 1st, it's a whole year before you're qualified for funding. So am I right when I say that?
Yep, so if you were to measure, if you were to start your measure, if you could qualify and start measuring by July 1/22, which is, let's, yeah, 20, I said 22, let's use 22. You report that in November of '23, and you start receiving those funds in July 1/24.
Right.
So it's a two-year, you have a one-year reporting period, you have one-year activity period, one-year reporting period, and then year number three is when you actually receive it. A July 1/2022 date is realistically unattainable at this point. It's it's available for our 28 joint agreement type working together, or sometime soon after there, but really, I think what we're looking at is a reporting period starting July 1/2023.
Three.
Thank you. Which means first revenues would be July 1/2025. So we're, this is a multi-year plan in order to address this concern.
And if we run out in three years, that's okay timing, but if we run out in two years, then the the governments are going to have to figure out how do we get there?
Yeah, it just comes down to the overall, if we're currently locally losing, let's say a quarter million dollars a year, but Johnson County is getting the additional money, and they're losing 1.6, there's got to be something else in there that's causing them to lose that much money.
They wouldn't be receiving it yet, because it's at least a year, it's a brand-new
They've been, they've been around in county.
Johnson County has been receiving the GEMT, I think
Yes.
this is their second or third year
Okay.
receiving that. Medic is a very efficient operation on the cost side, and so versus
Way to go, Linda.
Sorry.
Can we keep that expanded service without getting a large deficit, I guess, is the big question.
You know, that was, that was, that was always the discussion with the Department of Public Health was, we have a model that works very efficiently. If we if we put us together as a 208E, technically, we're a government, but in the bureaucratic world, that's not the way they see it. So it it has, we have struggled with trying to get to what can we be to to meet the parameters? And and when we when we talked about this, we weren't necessarily seeking the money, we were trying to seek the service delivery that we have today. That's been the model, or the idea all along, is what we have works, and we want that to continue to work.
And somewhat an expansion of that, if we could, if we had additional revenue
Correct.
to get more medics out.
Correct. And so we never, we weren't seeking the money for the sake of the money, but we were seeing what was going on around us, saying we could be eligible for this. As we talked about with the offset, we could be eligible for the offset money, and we could be eligible for no more fuel tax, we could be eligible for no more sales tax. All those things would create a better lack of expenditure and better revenue picture that could keep us close to with the model that we had or have, and that's been our desire all along. But the world's changed pretty radically, given COVID, for a lot of, in a lot of ways, and so this discussion has been amped up by virtue of that.
Cherry, go ahead.
But didn't, in fact, this model work good for COVID? I mean, it seems to me that that
Depends on where you're at in the in the spectrum. If you're an employee, it didn't work very well at all in COVID.
Well, okay.
You know.
But for the patients and the taxpayers, but I mean, for the patients, they had backup ambulance, if we had, you know, four patients out in the fifth ward, they could respond with four patients, uh, four ambulances to the fifth ward.
Yeah, the only reason why the revenue worked, though, was PPP loan, I assume.
Yeah.
Yes.
Otherwise, you would have shown, how much was that PPP loan, you know?
Oh, gosh, it was about 1.3, so we would have had about a $400,000 loss potentially that year, and and it was tough, that was a tough year.
Well, I I hear what you're saying is that the employees were overworked.
Well, I think our own guys would tell you, we, then, early on, the amount of COVID calls we were getting and the amount of protection that people had to utilize was taxing, you know, and the care that you had to give, and and the concern for themselves becoming infected, and the concern that they were going to infect the rest of the department, anybody they were around, their families. I think, you know, the guys in the back can tell you, the stress of this on everybody was terrible. So I can't imagine what it was like for people that were on the front line. So when you say it it worked well, it worked well for, if you were on the receiving end, I've I've often said this, nobody cares what your shirt looks like when you're on the bottom of the stretcher and looking up. You're not looking at what the patch says, you're just looking at, is that person taking me and get me help? You might, you might, if you're really cognizant, know that it says Bettendorf Fire or Medic Ambulance, but really, all you want is, is somebody going to take me to the hospital, and am I going to get better? If you can even think at all. So that's the service that we want, is that everybody gets treated the same, the response times are consistent, and we're going to, we're going to consistently get there to help people and fulfill their needs.
Bill?
Has there been any discussion with our county and city partners as what the funding ratios would look like under 2080?
Yes and no, Bill. The the current revenue streams, the current model is the metro is the, where the predominant number of calls are in Davenport or Bettendorf. So obviously, the outlying agencies don't have the number of calls, yet our our response is based on a geographic set of locations, and they'd be able to pull pull in and pull out. In terms of how the revenue is received, it's received based on the metro, so more comes from the urban area. But in terms of if you were to try to allocate out expenses, is that what you're talking about, potentially? We've not done that.
We haven't.
And a way that, well, a simple way to do it, is is what would, if each department did their own, you'd figure that out pretty quick, could you afford to do it? And and the answer, I think, is no.
Right.
Not without a levy increase.
A huge levy increase. Greg?
Okay, make sure I get all my points here.
You like Eminem, we know that.
Yeah.
So so for those who don't know, I
So, so for those who don't know, I was, I started on Bettendorf Police Department in 72 and we had volunteer fire departments all over the place, volunteer ambulance services. We had a red pickup truck or a red station wagon here. The service was horrid, horrid. I, I shudder to think of the people that could have been saved that weren't. You gotta look beyond, I mean, I know we gotta talk about dollars, but you gotta look beyond dollars. What does it save to get a person to, to not have a stroke? Besides the, the person's health, the cost of, of continued care for years and years and years. Or you get good service and you save that person and, and the family and, and the, I mean, it's, it's, you can't calculate it. So I, I understand we gotta talk about dollars, but I think service is more important, the service provided. I can't, I, I can't see going back to everybody doing their own thing. We're not going to have everybody picking up their own, having their own landfill. We're not going to have, we, we, we purposely went to SEC because we had, everybody had their own dispatch center and it was, you couldn't talk to each other. The model's there. It, it needs to be, it needs to be centrally coordinated and input from everybody. But I, I really think that it need, the, the consolidated run under, what, what was the first one called?
County.
No, the.
Oh, Chapter 422D.
Yeah.
Sure. Option one.
The service, the service now is so good. It's, it's amazing to me. And I just think we need to enhance it and organize it and, and try to do the best we can for the tax dollars that we get. But I, I just can't, I just cannot see going back to everybody having their own ambulance and everybody, it's just crazy. It's, it's life and death and, and, and quality of life for lots and lots of people. And so whatever, I think whatever we need to do to keep doing what we're doing is, is so important. And then I'll, I'll be quiet.
Bill?
I agree with everything Greg says. You know, you can't put, can't put a dollar amount on, on saving lives. But you know, I think if, if this is going to go forward and I, I think 2080 is the appropriate rate, way to go. I think you have to tell the taxpayers, what is this going to cost? So I think that's a focus going forward.
Absolutely.
Is you guys sit down and nail down what the cost is going to be so we can sell it to the public.
And certainly if we go with option one at some point and go to a referendum, that will be huge. There are certain assets that medic has now. The question would be what happens to them under scenario three and four. Really, Linda, you've been at it, doing an excellent job for a long time. I don't see a scenario under which we transfer assets to somebody else other than this cooperative effort. Can you see that?
Not really. And I don't, I mean, I think that's the other question. I think we've been trying to work with the Iowa Medicaid Enterprise to see what the 2080, you know, options are. And I think that the asset transfer is a question. I don't know, David, if you have any thoughts on that.
I think it has to probably be to the, the lead dog. It would have to be to the county.
Again, if you had a single applicant and they were, there's standards of how we recognize a contribution of that nature and we would have to prove that out to, to them. But some of the state's questions have, in the past have been a fair market value of, of, of a contribution of that nature and what, and what the impacts are. But if we measure the cost on an annual basis, it doesn't matter how you receive those assets. It matters what you, how much depreciation expense you have in a year, you know, it, it's a significant dollar amount. So I, I would say, yes, you, you, the, the governing board of medic will be the one to decide where their assets go and, and.
Right.
I think, I think that's key as well. If, how much startup cost any one organization would have.
And, and, and one of the models that we had talked about, that I'd been advocating for called for us and Davenport to, in essence, match the county's shortfall. We, we talked about $150,000 contribution per year for five years for the capital assets to fund ambulances or capital expenditures as a, a way to get us through the, the next five years. Which would get you hopefully the GEMT money and possibly a referendum. Right. And avoid the crisis. Yep. So we had talked about that. But part of the issue that David talks about is how they see that. In terms of you're still not a single entity, you're a, you're a conglomerate, if you will. And they, you would get less in GEMT dollars by virtue of that contribution. Cause it's not full tax, it's partial tax, if you will. But it, it, it's money, in my opinion, money's still money. So if, if we did that for five years as a contribution, maybe there's a way to do that and still qualify for GEMT or certainly be on the, the edge to it. And then to the point you made, Bill, okay, is that fair? Right now, we, 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 the, the, the way this is run, the urban is really subsidizing the rural. When you, under their model, but, but nobody, nobody's on the line but for the county. We don't, we don't pay any subsidy to medic, never have. Davenport's never paid any, any subsidy to, to medic. The county has absorbed a loss for some period of time in there. So all of that would have to be thought through how, or if you do that. But clearly if the county were to take it on, we could still make a voluntary contribution for a period of time if we chose to do that to get this thing off and running. And that might be something that the county might certainly entertain. But we're, again, we're trying to figure our way through this relatively quickly because although we might say three to five years in the distance looks like a long period of time, it's not much time, particularly when we have to.
With the Titanic.
Yeah, it's moving the Titanic.
Yep.
The county doesn't have unlimited funding either.
That's right. That's the other, that's the other issue here. They, they just can't willingly say, okay, we'll do it. And maybe their, their levies are capped. So this is going to be a group effort and a team sport, as we, as we say.
It's doable.
I think it's unlocking some additional revenue streams that just are not available as a 501(c)(3). And if you look at, you know, GEMT and you look at 422D, you've got two separate streams that could, and the expense reduction too.
Significant dollars with both of those that are available. And the most locally secure funding is a 422D.
It's coming down to really, it's a no brainer. We gotta stay in the boat together and we gotta go down that path. And if we can't get the referendum ready for next September, it's the next March or whatever, because it, it is hard to get all these ducks in a row. But we gotta be getting the ducks in a row together. Right? And that's what we're talking about.
Absolutely.
Okay. We got more questions. We'll go to Scott and then we'll go to Jerry.
Isn't that option like 1.5? The county takes it over, we subsidize it. I mean, you've already got, I think, did we not already approve the 2080 through us? I mean, we.
No, not this one.
No.
Not this, conceptually, I'm sure we've talked about it.
We talked about it, I thought, basically approved it. So, I mean, I mean, the 1.5 is the county takes it over. We voluntarily give them the money to get the additional amount.
We turn it into a referendum and, and work with our friends at the county who have been so good to work with.
To get it. And we gotta cover that amount until the referendum comes through.
Yeah. One way to look at it. Jerry?
Under GEMT, that money is state money, right?
It's actually federal money.
Oh, it's federal money. Okay.
That flows through the state.
Flows through the state. Okay. Because my question was going to be, how?
They make the decisions.
Sure are we of that? If it's state money, you know, if it's, if it's guaranteed like backfills are guaranteed.
The landscape is ever changing. We've raised, we've raised you well, grasshopper. While the landscape is ever changing, at this point, the financial directors, Mr. Farmer, Mr. Schat, Davenport's representative, Ms. Mallory, went and they've, they've done their due diligence. I trust them. I trust their process. And there are things that we hoped might get done in a 2080 that we're being told will not get done, or at least maybe not 100% sure they'll get done. So we've adjusted our model accordingly. Thank you to the great work of the three of those folks. Any other questions? Okay. Let's wrap this up and say thank you very much, Linda, for all of your work. A few more years isn't going to hurt you. We love you. You just keep sticking around and.
Wow.
I know, I know. And we're trying. David, thank you. Thank you for the county's continued partnership, not only on this, but on so many other things. We really do appreciate it. And we believe here, I know I'm speaking for council, that that is a very valuable relationship and we want to continue to work that relationship the best way we can. So please remind us how to be good partners if we need those reminding from time to time, but we're in the boat together. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Awesome, Deb.
All right, councils, they pack up. Take a look at your operational items for tomorrow. If there are any questions on an operational item for a council or for a department head from a council member, let's ask those at this time. What do you got a question? Jerry, do you have a question?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Yes, on item 16, on change to the rules on fencing. My question is, why, or can we specify the type of fence? In other words, if you got four lots next to each other, one guy could put up a chain link fence, one guy could put up wood. The next one puts up wood and paints it. Next one puts up white plastic. That's not going to have a very good appearance along a main street.
Yeah.
Mr. Hunt, would you help us if, with what you thought we were putting together and why, or just maybe answer the question with that in mind? This is our Director of Community Development, Mr. Mark Hunt. Thank you.
Sure. So our ordinance, very rarely in, in our city code, do we, do we specify material type? Only in certain locations, downtown overlay district, Uticod overlay district are two locations. Because we have the overlay district that those, those types of concerns are, are addressed. Another area where they are sometimes addressed, and it's not based on the context of other fences around it, but it's based on where we have overland drainage easements. If we have an overland drainage easement, we do not want a fence to occupy that area that might impede the water. So something like a, a chain link fence in that area basically becomes a, a net that starts to collect debris and slows the water down. We don't have a, a rule that your fence has to match your neighbors in most parts or any part of town, to be honest with you, with the two exceptions notwithstanding. So while this ordinance does allow fences in a part of town that, prior to today, doesn't, they aren't allowed, it doesn't allow a specific type. It just allows fences that would normally be built.
So my recommendation would be that we use this as an exception and specify the type of fence. In other words, you know, if you go up along 53rd, going east from 18th, there's wood fence there. And it's all the same and it looks pretty good. Whereas you go to Middle Road here and in front of the real estate office out here, just after you get off the interstate, going over to the 14th. There they've got fences and there's chain length, there's wood, there's, it doesn't look all that good.
Yeah, that's not contemplated in the ordinance. I understand your perspective on that. I certainly can see the aesthetic that you're talking about, but that isn't contemplated and would be a break from what we've done traditionally.
Your Honor?
Lisa, how are you?
Good. Jerry, I believe, hi. I believe that fence that you're talking about on 53rd was done by the developer. And then I just kind of see if you're requesting that there's a consistent fence, say along four lots, you're going to have to have financial help. There may be one homeowner that can't afford the type of fence that another homeowner's putting in. So I kind of seen that as an issue. So just a side comment.
You know, I also, I, I was just talking to Chris offline. My concern is to place a bird upon a property owner, be it home or a commercial, to do something aesthetically. I understand your circumstances. If it's in an overlay district, there's a certain appearance. There's a reason for an overlay district. The overlay district cannot be the entire city and so on. Certainly if it's going to impede water that's already in a drainage easement, that doesn't make any sense. If it's going to impede a sightline at a stop sign or intersection, that doesn't make any sense. Those are safety and/or public policy type issues, but mandating that they look the same, I think would be a problem in my opinion. I know that's on for tomorrow night. I think that gives us the opportunity to start the dialogue. If there are others who have that question, we can certainly chat about it or talk about it tomorrow.
Mayor, I would also note that we do have many neighborhoods in the city that have covenants in place, private covenants that do cause the fences to be of a certain type, all wood or all white or all plastic or not of a certain type perhaps. So, and those are, those are private party agreements that.
Certainly one could do that, knowing what you're buying and the restrictions placed on it by your subdivision is different than the city.
Yes, sir. A private agreement not involving the city.
Right on. Okay. You and I are on the same page. Any other item on the operational agenda for tomorrow that any person would have a question or concern about? All right. Let's move to consent. Is there anything on consent? Any particular council member would ask to discuss or have a question about it this time? Yes, Greg.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, D, what, what, what does light fall for heaven's sakes?
It'll be $10. Sorry about that. To the local charity.
The Tuesday night fund?
Yep.
Perfect timing.
Who has a ring like that?
Me. D.
That's Deb, just checking on you. God rest your soul, beautiful lady.
It was one of my constituents, Your Honor. What's light fixtures mean?
These are the streetlights that are going underground on Forest Grove, I believe.
Stop and go light?
No, no, not traffic lights. No, not, not traffic signals.
So what's the difference between that and streetlights in E?
They're different places. The difference is we're going underground specifically on Forest Grove as part of that road project. And the installation of streetlights, which they might be underground in Century Heights, we're ordering those in the subdivision. So typically on an arterial street, then we just take the poles that Mid-American.
Brent or Brian, are you online and you want to clean this up?
Yeah. Decker, I can answer that one.
Thank you, Brent.
No problem. So this purchase is the actual luminaire, the actual LED light that will go on the poles that we previously purchased. So if you remember correctly, we're gonna actually, the city's gonna install and own the streetlights on Forest Grove and Middle as part of our project out there. So we're piecing these together. We bought the poles from a supplier. We're now buying the actual LED fixture heads from a supplier and then we will pay somebody to install the, the full completed package.
Okay. How about E? So Mid-America is completely out of the picture on this.
On, they are on Forest Grove, right, Brent?
Yes. Yep. We will just pay.
No gross-up fees or anything we have to pay.
Very good. No gross-up fees, everything.
Yep. And then the, the subdivision item on the agenda is exactly that, ordering in streetlights. So it's just a, a mechanism that we have to do for mid-am to put it in for new subdivisions and get the developer to actually be able to sign off on them.
Just ironic timing, Mr. Webster?
Any other item on consent? Any council person has a question or thought about before we ask to approve that agenda in its entirety? Let's do that. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of taking it up as written tomorrow?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed will do so. I have no, nothing to be added by mayor. Is there anything to be added tonight by council? All right. Seeing none. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We stand adjourned. Good work, people. Seven.